Seven, Buck.
Seven? We'll call regular council meeting. Call a regular council meeting to order. December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven o'clock. Any additions to the agenda? I guess so. Any citizen comments? See any? Uh, Pam would like to move the economic development proposal up to after citizen comments to now. Okay. I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Pam's request to move economic development after citizens' comments.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on favor. All opposed, pass as five and a half. Uh, Ryan?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I've been here a while, so I'll give you guys a brief update and then I'll go into the reason why here. But, um, we've been really busy over in economic development. Um, the kitchen is licensed now over at the annex to be a commercial kitchen. We'll start programming with that in January. Um, gonna be hoping to get some people that are doing food businesses going in there and use that space. Um, childcare, we had, um, one of childcare providers leave in December seventh. And then Fire Marshal's asked us to add doors to the back of the building and staircase and everything. We did that. Uh, Fire Marshal is coming tomorrow to do the inspection. We have Dara Bolt, who is taking over that childcare position there. So she's in there and she's signed a lease, so that's great. And then, uh, we've been working on the housing project. Um, and we're planning to get started, uh, building houses in February. And so I've been working with Pam on getting those lots, uh, ready. And with HOIR Partner, who is doing the first bid. The first bid is on the first two houses, one here in St. John, one over in Stafford. And, uh, we've pretty much finished the bidding process with that. And, um, probably about sixty-five, seventy percent of it will be local contractors doing the house. So we'll have seven more houses that we'll do bids on probably in January or in February. And, um, I can give you guys an update about that at that point, so. Is there any questions about any of that? No? Um, so we just, uh, basically concluded the, the grant process for Epic, uh, which is with Kansas Arts Commission. And, um, basically with that project, we're gonna be doing a gazebo here in St. John and also a band shell space over in Stafford. Um, I've, uh, requested funds, um, and so they're gonna be sending that to us, um, first of the year. And, uh, it's, uh, forty-five thousand dollars, uh, complete, um, amount. And that will include the half the gazebo costs. And then we discussed, you guys covering the other half of the gazebo. And then you guys had also discussed possibly, uh, providing a concrete pad and electricity to the gazebo. In the grant also, we've put money in it, uh, for, um, artists to come do music. So we're gonna be using part of that money to bring a band in for Jubilee. Uh, and so we'll use the space, uh, for that then. Sturdy built is where we're buying it, you guys have that in front of you. This week is the last week that they'll allow, uh, for, uh, to, to reserve gazebo. They're gonna stop after this month, taking orders for that. There's a five-month lead time on the gazebo, so I'll be hopefully ordering it, uh, this week. And then we'll probably have it by April, um, in time for Jubilee. And then we'll maybe do a ceremony, a grand fitting ceremony, everything for that at that point. Do you guys have questions about that or?
Or which one were you talking about?
Yeah, it's like ten by sixteen.
Yeah. Do they, um, sturdy built, they build it and they just drop it? Do they provide specs if you want it to be a permanent structure for your concrete pad? Or do you just set it on a concrete pad? Is there any creating?
I can ask them that. But I, I did a shed over here and they didn't tell me anything. I asked them and they're like, do whatever. I did like a rock bed underneath it, uh, because that's just a shed over there. But, um, in terms of concrete, I'm not sure how thick it should be, uh, or anything like that. But, uh, I can ask them that.
So you're looking, you need half of this eighty-three, thirty more?
Um, initially for the, uh, per, the, the reservation of the gazebo, it's like twenty percent of the cost.
Two thousand.
Yeah.
I mean, would it be better just to approve the full amount that you could do on units if you want transaction instead of multiple or?
Yeah, that's fine. And then I can reimburse you, uh, the amount that's in the grant. Because they'll.
That would be fun.
Yeah.
So we need to pay?
For the full gazebo?
And then we need to pay for the pad and if we want electricity to it, right? Is that of our, the pad and the electricity is on us?
Yes. So it's, uh, it's about forty-five hundred for the gazebo that's in the grant. And then there's a few thousand for, uh, entertainment.
So economic development through the grant is covering forty-five hundred?
Mm-hmm.
And then everything else in the city's cost? So do we need to approve a specific amount or just the?
So it'd be twenty percent of the?
Yeah, let's just do the twenty percent to get it order. And then we're gonna have to take bids on the concrete if you guys want to do concrete. And in electricity, our guys can just do that, no problem.
Where is this gonna be placed at?
We talked about the northwest.
Northwest corner.
Where the big nativity's at right there.
There were questions about where the nativity would go after this. I had a couple of questions from certain people that you might know, uh, about the nativity. But I don't know, that's up to you guys where you put the nativity. You're gonna cause a lot of problems, sorry. Cause a lot of problems.
Make a difference at the end.
Yep.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the twenty percent. Up to two thousand dollars, plus two thousand will come in.
It's two thousand eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Uh, an amount of two thousand eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Got a motion by Aaron, second by Ryan on the gazebo, two thousand eighty-two dollars. If you want to start, all three, all opposed, passes five and a half.
Ryan, where's your first house going to St. John?
First house? It is gonna go probably on, um, Second Street, West End. Well, three of the lots are over there, so.
South side of the road?
Yeah.
One of the lots is on the north.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So it's going on the south side?
The smallest one, we'll probably do first.
It's on the north side.
Yeah.
The first one's going on the south side of Second Street.
North side.
North side. Yeah, so it's a more narrow one, the south side, yeah. Um, I did have one more thing I wanna talk about. Um, I'm gonna do a pilot project with, we're gonna be selling these houses, some of them, or as many as we can, I guess. And, uh, I put together kind of a, something for you guys to think about. I'll come back to you guys and maybe put something together. It's an incentive plan, uh, incentivize people to move to Stafford County. I was gonna do the screen, but it's kind of weird. But, um, um, basically, uh, developing incentive package to get people to come here. So, uh, you guys all know about this housing shortage. People are starting to live anywhere because they can work online or remote. Some people are moving from cities. And then there's a lot of cities across, uh, Kansas and other states that are already doing incentive plans to try to attract people to their communities. So the idea would be targeting a certain type of person. So we would define like, do we want like a family of three or a family with two kids or, um, that sort of thing? Uh, allow certain types of housing. So if we were to, we'll do a pilot with what we're doing now, but in the future, if we wanna do another round of housing, we would say, okay, we wanna have a limited, like if somebody comes, they would build a house. It would be a certain, uh, amount that they would need to spend on a house. And then, uh, combine incentives for attractiveness. So I'll go through some of these types of incentives that people do. And then you'd put a minimum requirement for the incentive to kick in. So they'd have to live here for a certain amount of time to get the full incentives. So family size, minimum salary, uh, these are, these are all things that I've seen in other incentive plans that cities are doing. Industry need, so if, uh, a community has specific jobs that they need, they would target those type of people to move to the community. And then people not living in the county. I'm also thinking about doing something where if people are, um, we've gotten a bunch of calls from people wanting to downsize their houses because they're elderly. They wanna live in a smaller house, more manageable. So there might be opportunity for us to build houses for those people and then their houses are now available, uh, for people to move into. So the value of the house would be, um, a requirement, uh, where you want them to build could be a requirement as well. What lots are available, or you'd say this part of town. We've looked at, uh, I'm looking at land over in Stafford, forty acres. That could be a potential place for building a, uh, kind of a subdivision type thing where people would move there. And then a timeline, you say, okay, we'll approve you to move here and you get these incentives if you move within the next six months or whatever. And then you'd combine, combine incentives, so you get like a free lot, maybe construction finance. Uh, you might waive utility connection fee, um, internet service, exercise membership, grocery store gift cards, cash incentives, maybe tax incentive if they meet certain requirements. So these, these are just ideas, okay? So I'm not suggesting this at all, but they're ideas that I've seen, um, others are doing. And then there's a few examples, here's one. Uh, so Lincoln, Lincoln County here in the state, they're doing all these things where you get a little closer. So they do like a lot of stuff like forty-five hundred dollars cash, maybe a lot. They have a special get-together with the local tourism person to talk about the area. Um, and then they can have like a tour package, um, like bike riding in this area where they, they wanna highlight that as part of their, outdoorsiness of the county. And so, you know, you can see there, there's a lot of things. Uh, Topeka's doing this as well. And, um, I saw a lot of cities in the region that are starting to do stuff like this. So, um, after this, nine houses are built, or actually I wanna do this as we're building them, start promoting this idea as a pilot project. So do a basic project where we're saying, you know, promoting, hey, move to Stafford County. This is what we can offer you, we have these houses for sale. But we also have these other things that we wanna add as kind of like an add-on if you wanna choose to live here. And then if that goes well, then rolling it out to be more, more broad. And we can offer construction finance. Ego Diva can offer construction finance, they pre-approved for the loan. We build the house for them, um, with our construction finance. And then they would take over the house mortgage payments after the house is completed. And then, um, whatever incentives that you guys choose to do. I've already also talked to Stafford about this, Stafford City Council. And they're also thinking about what they possibly could offer. But I would, I would like to offer something that's kind of like uniform for the county. So it's not like, hey, we're offering this and they're not in kind of competition, but kind of something more, more set for the full, full county. So obviously some of the towns might not participate, but, um, whatever towns participate, it would be nice to have some kind of a unified, uh, idea. So this is an idea that I'd like to try. And then you guys can think about what you would like to participate in. I know you're already giving money every year and you're, you've, you're giving lots and everything, you've done a lot already. And maybe we can get some of the lo, the local businesses here to participate as well, like maybe White's and, um, uh, other, other, other people as well to talk for something. We've also talked about doing, uh, Golden Belt, have some kind of a one-year free internet service for people that move in the county from outside. But, um, that's kind of the idea. So do you guys have any thoughts, questions about that? These are really easy to find online. If you wanna say, hey, where's the town to move to with incentives? And you'll pop up a bunch that, that's possible to do that one. So maybe you wanna move away as well and get incentives somewhere else, I don't know. Um, I know they're selling houses in Italy for a dollar, so, um, they are, but I'm just joking, obviously. Questions, thoughts?
I think it's a good idea. I think it's something that, uh, we could work with to entice people to come to St. John. I don't know if I necessarily agree on having something uniform. I think it would be neat if each city would offer something unique to that city. But that's just my opinion on that.
Yeah. I was just saying, I don't want some of these drastically different, like, look at that, there would be no point in that, like.
Right.
Like, oh, we're gonna give them ten thousand dollars and they're like, I'll give you a gym membership, you know, something like that. So, yeah. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any discussion on economic development? Moving on, entertain a motion for three minutes, regular council meeting, December fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve regular council meeting minutes, December fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Got a motion, second, second by Aaron, all favor? Entertain a motion for appropriation ordinance, twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred, three dollars and eight cents.
Make a motion to approve appropriation ordinance, number twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-three, in amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred, three dollars and eight cents.
Got a motion on the table and a second by Aaron, all favor? All opposed, passes five and a half. Same motion for petty cash, three hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
Make a motion to approve petty cash in amount of three hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Mark motion, Aaron, second, all favor? Five and a half. Uh, entertain a motion for Adams Brown LLC, in amount of twenty-three hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve Adams Brown LLC in amount of two thousand three hundred dollars.
Got a motion and a second on the table, uh, all favor? All opposed. Department heads, Jeff, Curtis?
Nothing.
Nothing? Any questions for Curtis?
You guys gotta go on, Curtis.
Uh, just working on that new co-op flex. Getting into it, be energized tomorrow. Nothing really exciting.
Yeah.
Plans or?
Anybody else have questions? Jason?
I just have, I just have those, what? I was gonna ask you guys if you could up my spending limit to two thousand instead of one thousand. Stuff's getting up there, I went to calling in order and some blades for the grater for this summer, blah, blah, blah. And stuff's just getting over a thousand dollars. Instead of have to asking for every little bit, if I could just up that up to two.
Now Jeff is the only one that has two thousand, the rest of us are a thousand. Yeah, I think it's a policy, so.
Just make a motion for you add?
Give him what?
Per two thousand, permission to do up to two thousand dollars then?
Yeah, or?
I think we should maybe just do the department heads and make it all even. That would be fun. Department head, two thousand, I mean, it's not, two thousand doesn't really go a lot nice anymore. No, it'll help them making their decisions and making ordering stuff, so yeah, I agree with that. If I'm bored, it'd be two thousand. So make a motion to approve all department heads, their spending limit up to two thousand dollars. Second.
Got a motion on the table and a second by Kyle. Any more discussion? All favor? All opposed, passes five and a half.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Moving on, you got any questions for Jason, Councilor Walsh?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah. When you pull into White's on that, I've noticed that's just really like, a lot of, a lot of.
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna have to. I'm gonna get a ladder, get a ladder and crawl up in that grater tomorrow morning and get up there.
No, I, I just, I just.
I was, I was. Alan doesn't feel comfortable with doing it yet and afraid he's gonna rip the concrete up and blah, blah, blah. And I said, well.
Yeah, it's just between the.
I know exactly where it is, yeah. I know exactly where it is.
It just seems worse, I guess, when I went in there.
That's because honestly, I haven't been on it in over a month, so. And I was, uh, I told him tomorrow I wanna get the, get the ladder out and I might have to creep up that ladder a little bit and try to leap in there, but I'll get it.
Jason, does he feel comfortable running that grater?
Well, he just, he does, but as long as there ain't no manholes or concrete around, he's, he's like, like Eighth Street and stuff like that. He's gonna go work on that after I get this done. Until he gets, gets to Warren.
You can run that grater, can you?
I've ran that one.
I'll just hop in there.
Too, I, uh, hadn't been graded, I just wondered.
Which one?
Eighth Street.
I, 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 I went down the streets today and I said something that they need to be a little bit more paying attention to.
Yeah.
So I mentioned this morning, so.
Oh, you guys worship, do something.
Yeah, no, that's okay, 'cause I was already planning on it. I went out there, I went out there to the grocery store and grabbed my goody pills this morning. I didn't like it. So.
Jason, I've been asked to see if, uh, can be, can be done with the, uh, alleyway behind the library, uh, over here. There's some potholes that people are complaining about.
Okay, is that in the alley or is it in the parking of the library?
Okay. It's right next to the daycare, right in there. And there's, I think there's nothing really past that, I don't think.
Okay, so, well, I thought they did too. Well, we'll just take the scareifier in there, make sure there's no vials or something in there and we'll peel it up and re-bake it out.
Sounds good. Thank you. Just not gonna problem there for sure. The nice is concrete, but I wouldn't like to.
I texted Jason and called Pam this morning about that. And asked Jason to get a couple quotes to concrete or put some numbers together, what it'd take to pave. And then once we have those numbers, talk with Pam about where that might come from. Cause I don't, I think dollar for dollar, the amount of people that it'll affect in this town, I don't think you can spend your money a better way than to get that paved or concreted in. That's my opinion. Just seems like it's always a problem.
Just to continue this.
We got a bid from Chris like two years ago, it was for like sixty, maybe. Just to go from the highway to the.
Like a hundred yards, basically.
Basically to the west driveway, the far, the far west there.
I mean, you could save money and just do the main entrance, 'cause that's the only gets it used.
Yeah, yeah.
I think if you're there and you're doing it, you might as well do both.
Yeah, trucks go in the west entrance. Yeah, now it needs done.
I mean, the timeline on that is probably a February meeting to actually discuss what's possible, but I just, I think it probably needs to be done in spring or summer if we can make it happen.
Already makes it cold.
Is that, I mean, we could use maybe some one percent funds for that if we really wanted to do it and be kind of a community.
Might be worth a few phone calls too, there might be some grants to do, pave streets and.
I actually emailed Ryan and he's gonna research some grant. He said that next year, January, there is a lot of grant that will be open to, um, infrastructures and stuff like that. So he's gonna let me know.
Yeah, it'd be worth seeing.
Something to look into, I mean, bring in money.
It would be worth seeing, uh, obviously it'd be a longer discussion, but if the grant requires it to be a whole street that's like not paved currently, you could do all of Fifth Street. That opens up a whole nother can of worms because I think Fifth Street then becomes the main road over Fourth Street, just because it's got access to the grocery store. There's gonna be a lot more traffic on it if you pave it.
Always thought it'd be kinda cool if a person could just sit there and put, uh, curb and gutter in it and then just make our streets. But, you know, there again, there's one more street you gotta spend money on, the pothole and all that, so that's.
Yeah. I just wonder sometimes those grants are like, well, we're not gonna pay for a hundred yards or something. It's gonna have to be a whole street.
Something to look at and we can see what grant money we, you know.
Yeah, what's possible.
I mean, start thinking that.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Please, you, story. Bar Keith, come on out here.
Yes, sir.
She's got a pain.
I got two more applications for C and B license, forty-two restaurant here in town, that needs to be approved.
One motion or two?
One, you can just, but you have to make both of them.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the Siri Lamont beverage license for El Perro Leo and Flavio Lavo.
Second.
Got a motion on the table and a second, any more discussion? All favor? All opposed, passes five and a half.
And, um, I would like to ask you guys if you are interested in giving, um, all of us employees a Christmas bonus. Since you guys have been doing it every year, I mean, it's not required, you don't have to. It was just something that we have to ask, I guess.
And make a motion, a second.
I don't know what you guys think, but, um, I called Pam and asked her about the budget. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to making it one fifty. Just a hundred dollars doesn't go as far as it used to. Everything's more expensive. I don't know. Our employees work hard, it's a pretty small percentage of what we pay them all year. I think it's a nice gesture.
Hundred fifty is now the question, I think that's fair.
And then I also, just out of curiosity, um, like I said, don't have to do it, but, um, I called Cornwall Beef to see if they did like Christmas boxes or something to do. I know we do the, the Christmas party, so maybe that kinda substitutes, but didn't know if, if we wanted to do a steak bundle or a gift card to get some meat for a Christmas meal or anything like that, but, um.
I think we priced, what was that?
They, yeah, there was a couple of boxes, they did, they do like, uh, two, the two ribeyes and three fillets was like an eighty-dollar box. But, I mean, they've got gift cards, they've got, and it wouldn't even have to be Cornwall Beef either. You know, there's a curtain belt up north too, or, maybe we wouldn't have to do it at all, 'cause we do do the, the Christmas party, which is kind of an opportunity for that meal as well. But it was just a thought, 'cause I think, or please do a good job and it's, uh.
Do you want the, the one fifty, the mess of bundle or do you wanna do?
I mean, I think it would be nice, but I don't, yeah, I mean, I think it would be nice to do both, but then we're doubling it from years past and maybe that's too much, but it sounds like the budget can make it work. I mean, we've got sixteen employees, so.
The one fifty, if you wanna do the meat bundle, it's come up to about thirty-six hundred dollars, um, for all employees.
Full time?
Yes, full time.
I think maybe it'd be a better idea to do a gift certificate if you're wanting to do that, just because of the fact that some, some employees may want a foie, some may want just ground beef, and maybe not.
Yeah.
Get that in, like you just come with the dollar and all, but, you know, give a gift certificate for that. Or just give them the straight two hundred dollars and they choose, you know, everyone has different preferences of.
Yeah, that's fine.
So raise it to, the bonus to two hundred dollars and just let them, that would be fine. And then they choose if they want to go spend it on the meat.
Absolutely, absolutely. I make a motion to approve the increase for the employee bonus, for Christmas bonus to two hundred dollars from one hundred dollars.
Second.
Got a motion by Mark and a second to increase the bonuses to two hundred dollars. Any more discussion? All favor? All opposed? Passes five now.
Thank you. The guys will appreciate it.
Anything else?
And you're, it looked like in your report, you're gonna substitute like Martin Luther King Day and then take an extra day at Christmas. Did I read that right?
Yes.
So, so the office will be, or everyone will be off which days?
The second, twenty-second, this Friday.
Twenty-second and then Christmas Day and Monday. Okay, so, okay.
It's on my top.
City Attorney Dennis.
I don't have anything tonight.
Nothing. Under all business, property code violations, anybody got anything there we need to talk about?
Um, the two oh five moved all of their vehicles, so they are done finally.
Make a motion to remove two oh five southwest from the property code violation list. Second.
Got a motion on the table and Mark seconded it. Any more discussion? All favor? All opposed? Passes five now. How they doing on one-ten and one-twelve?
I don't think much has changed. I don't know.
Cold weather about it.
Are they, I mean, are they tearing it down?
I mean, I talked to Doris two months ago and she said they were planning to tear it down. And, yeah. I kind of said, well, you guys are working on it, so the city's not gonna bother you. It's more just that the code violation was, isn't fulfilled yet. And, and she said, well, if the city wants to tear it down for us, that'd be fine. So I don't know if they're just waiting.
It's a stewardship.
Well, I was gonna say, that's paper over there, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think just leave it on there and go on Lake Worth Ward and.
Yeah.
I forgot to talk to Chad about the two, would be the fourth and the first.
I talked to Joe about the swimming pool. Um, he said that they're going to start first of the year. And I did make sure that he knows that it has to be done before Memorial Weekend for weekend open. And he guaranteed that it's still gonna be done, so I think I'll ask.
Anything else? Anything on our new business? I think there's any executive sessions without her. I didn't hear a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Got a motion and a second on the table to adjourn. All favor? All opposed? Passes five now.
Not quite twenty, this.